Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 15th, and the time is 6:30 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First on our agenda is the consent agenda. The first item is the minutes from July 31st. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take the motion for the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Can I have a second? A little second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain because I wasn't here.
Do you want...I can abstain. I mean, I'm comfortable either way. I reviewed the minutes. I watched it. So either way, I'm comfortable.
Okay. Next, warrant 75. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant 75.
All those in favor? Oh, wait.
A second.
A second. Thanks, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is visitor comments. "Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting." Seeing none, we'll move along. Faith is not here. First student representative.
She couldn't make it.
I imagine she'll start coming when school's back in session.
That's what she answered, yes.
Next up is new business. First is a vote on Unit C.
Yes, so the Unit C contract was voted on and approved by the unit members and signed off by GEA leadership today. It was voted on earlier. They signed it today. And if you don't have it... Let me find it for you. Essentially, it has not changed since the last time we've had a discussion about it. There was a question about the stipend rollover, and they came back and agreed to the suggestion we made because they weren't annual stipends, that we added 18 cents to their hourly wage for 230-day employees and 16 cents for the 260-day employee. And that was a point that took some time to get worked out. I'm gonna find this for you guys, though, It should be in the folder. No. Sorry about that.
No worries.
I was not sure if we'd actually get it signed today,
There it is. Give everyone a chance to look at it quickly. Any questions or anything on this? We've talked about it quite a bit, I feel like.
Again, like I said, as we've talked about it, a lot of it has stayed exactly the same except for that section... Section 3C, that was the annual stipend that took some time to get fleshed out.
If there's no other question or comments, I'll take a motion. I'll make a motion to approve...
A second.
Oh, yep, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the handbooks. First one is East Meadow School.
Can we maybe go out of order? Because I know Lisa and Ally and Juan were all planning to come in, but we have John here. Let's see who's up first. Oh, Lisa, you're up first. Welcome. Timing is impeccable.
Where was the teacher?
Page seven. And then again, on page nine, there's another. Do you look at it with someone's name?
Sorry. It's...
Page seven, and then also on page nine. Not his name, it's another name.
I'm assuming you have the East Meadow handbook there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we were just looking. We saw a couple typos and just things that we were...as we were reading through it.
Slowly.
Yep. Page nine, Roseburg, assistant to us. Or take assistant.
And then you've got Rosenberg?
Yes.
Okay.
It was on page one, right?
Page two, actually, in the letter. It's the second...third sentence.
Just taking some notes. So I said to them, Lisa, sometimes as we look through these, it's like a lot to take in. So there's just a couple of typos that probably wouldn't come up on a scan through the document. So I'll let you know the ones that you've identified. Were there updates to the handbook? Changes that you wanted to?
Yes, there are several changes. Let me make sure I'm on the right one. Okay. So the letter will still need to be updated because rather than want to craft a new one, this is part of what's from last year. But I think you were looking more for language changes around policies and everything like that, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So will we see the updated?
Yes, I'll share it with you.
Okay, so we won't be voting it in then just because we'll want to see the letter?
Look up to you. We can bring it back with the new letter or...
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Or I can leave it with the letter as is. I mean, I took out some old language, and I mean, I think it's probably sufficient because I'll be spending...setting all other communications.
We'll circle back to that. What are the other changes and pages and stuff?
Okay. There are some updates, of course, with every school... every new school year. So we have the calendar has been changed. Some names in staffing and faculty have been changed. The more...the first significant change would begin on page 18.
So I do have a question. There's some formatting things, I think, but aren't all the phone numbers different now?
Not at East Meadow.
Okay.
Yet.
Yet, all right. I thought I had seen that they were all changing, but it must have been that the high school...
We did that at the junior senior high school, yes.
Okay, sorry. I'll stop interrupting.
Okay, no, that's okay. So page 18, the second paragraph after the word remember, the wording in bold, "It's a privilege to ride the school bus," and the rest of that paragraph
So just kind of in keeping with that, I'm assuming if it's permanent and a student was not allowed back on the bus, there would be other pieces in place reviewing, you know, if there were behavior or social, emotional, or whatever concerns were in place to see if there were other means necessary for a student to receive transportation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And sometimes, you know, there could be a student where their behavior could be so unsafe on the bus, and we've tried multiple strategies, such as putting a pair on, preferential seating, working with parents, making contracts, and it's still...it doesn't work. And then we have to think about alternatives.
I'm just thinking about the permanency and then the younger students, you know, kind of being guaranteed transportation and with that there.
Exactly.
Okay.
And defined permanently, is it for a school year or for the duration of their time in Grammy public schools? Does that impact field trips?
I guess we haven't totally defined permanently. It could be for the rest of that school year. We start fresh. Like, I wouldn't want to think of anything like this as being a long-term... If they're in first grade, they get suspended off the bus, they never get to ride the bus again. I feel like, you know, I think it would depend on the time of the year. It would depend on what the situation was. And so I think it's really case-specific.
So if that's the case, then I... I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with permanently.
So maybe I take out...
Permanence is, you know...I don't know.
Especially being bolded.
Right, like it just...
I understand the message, but it's a little alarming.
Yeah, I just don't want someone to come back and be like, "My kid, you said permanently. What does that mean?" You know? I don't know. I'm not sure how much credence we have with that if we say permanently, but it is a concern just the way that it's...
Well, it says temporarily or permanently, so it gives the option.
Right. It's just a question that I have, so I...
So what if I took out...changed this privilege to will to could be taken away from you and leave it at that?
I think I like that better personally, but what do you all think?
Yeah, that works.
Okay, all right. The next change is on page 22, or the add, rather. And this is just our updated marking period?
Are the bold throughout updates or are some of them just bolded just for our attention just as I'm scanning through? I'm just trying to figure out what's updated or what's...
I think sometimes it's just for attention, to get attention. I have a document here with everything, all the changes highlighted.
So with the marking period, you just adjusted the dates?
Yeah, so we try to look at the whole year, divide it into three parts, look at where it's an appropriate time for grades to close. Then we always want to give teachers two weekends to work on the report cards, so trying to be planful in advance so that it's not overtaxing on the teachers, but parents are informed at, you know,
Just a comment on that page under recess. I don't know if this was existing or not, but the last sentence there says, "During winter weather, students must have appropriate snow pants and boots to play in the snow, no exceptions." It might just be worth noting that some could be available at the school. Like, I don't want, you know, we have the Grammy to Go and things like that. I'm not sure if a little Astrid or something could be added. That way, it's not limiting to families that aren't able to provide that.
Just even changing the language to say something along... It's like, "If you don't have appropriate, please contact us, or we can try that."
Correct, yeah. I just think that's a great resource, and maybe not everyone knows about it, too. So just throwing that in there, so it's...
Okay, so I will add... And we did start to collect snow pants and snow boots last year, so if families got trouble, we just gave them away. Okay, all right, so I'll fix that. Next, if you can jump to page 43. And we'll be in a section...there's just on page... The last number before dress code under cellphone recording device policy we added. Number four, "It's prohibited for students or staff to use any recording devices on school grounds."
So does that mean teachers can't record something in their classroom and then post it? I know that, and I've seen that many times. Just curious how that would work.
This is the student handbook. I don't think we have similar...
But it says, "Students or staff to use any recording devices on school grounds."
I think we just should take out staff.
Maybe it says...I don't know.
It is prohibited for students or staff. It's the fourth bullet.
Okay. Yeah, I would just eliminate staff there. Sorry, I was looking up at the first line. It says, "While students are allowed..."
Although if it does go against the Family Educational Right and Privacy Act, then that's another conversation. I'm not sure what the difference is with... if there's any allowance for staff in that way, and if there...if there shouldn't be, then I think that's something that should also be discussed.
And then, just thinking in the cellphone, because we had the cellphone discussion for the high school, is that just for the high school or would we implement similar for East Meadow? Because if the middle schooler and high schoolers are putting their...whatever we ultimately decide, it seems weird that the other school would have different access or privilege to phones.
And I don't think, to my understanding, we've seen the same...we see anywhere close to the same level of views.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it just feels like we should... If we have a policy that we're going to put in place, of course, we haven't decided what it is. It seems like they should probably streamline. My personal thought.
I think, like, developmentally, it looks pretty different, too. Right? Like, you have students that are maybe having it with them and keeping it in their backpack on the upper end of the elementary age because they're maybe just starting to get off the bus on their own or whatever that looks like versus, you know, a middle or high school student who's using it for lots of different things at that point. So you're kind of reaching that tipping point, kind of sixth, seventh grade. So for me, I don't see an issue with it looking different based on where students are at developmentally. And if it's not reaching a level where, you know, it's impacting learning and students are having it out and like not following a rule to put it away or turn it over or do things like that, then it's...I don't...I kind of have less of an issue with it.
And honestly, I can truly say I've not had to confiscate one cellphone this year. So it's managed well by the teachers, and we haven't had an issue other than a recording device issue, so...
Anything else on that one? Next one?
Okay, let's see. The next one, if you could please go to page 46. And all of this section here, pages 46 through 49, these are all updates to the suspension law, and I believe high school had the same language put in as we did.
And we'll actually talk about the policy, JIC, that's connected to those later tonight
So I just had one question. And I think it's just a question and then maybe just something to consider. So the discipline and those pieces are, you know... One, I think it's tough for parents to read through and follow. And then trying to figure out what you're looking for in which section of the handbook to kind of read through and follow is tricky, too. And I think the high schools was laid out like a little bit differently, like the order. Because I think they started with... And I could be wrong, because, again, once you start looking through, the order gets kind of mixed up. But I think they started with the code of discipline and went right through the due process student discipline and then added students with disabilities after that piece. Whereas this one, there's like a section about... That kind of comes before. There's conduct and discipline, discipline pertaining to special needs students, procedural requirements applied to students not yet determined to be eligible for special education, and goes from there. And then it goes to prohibited items at school, cell phones, dress code, and then it goes back into the code of discipline and student discipline. So it's...for me, it was just when I was trying to look from handbook to handbook, it was a little confusing to figure out what was where. And I think as a parent, if I was trying to figure out, like, special education, 504, you know, where I was at, it would be a little, I think, trickier if it wasn't kind of all together.
Right.
So I don't know if there's a way to streamline that a little bit.
Yeah, I think we could. I'll take a look at the way the high schools organize it. And sometimes these handbooks, they...year after year, like more keeps getting added, and then sometimes there's a lot of redundancy. So I think that probably we could do a little reorganizing and cleaning it up.
Yeah, and I'm sure elementary-wise, there's, you know, different sections that might be added because you're dealing with, you know, toys and other items and things that are different. But just wanted to mention that.
And I do see, too...this does still have the MAS-C from December 2014, but I put a note into these so that if the committee, if and when the committee adapts the one that came in 2022, then we'll update that. So those are things that aren't totally unparalleled, but it'd be a slight change.
Am I misreading? In the second paragraph under student discipline...
Which one? What page?
Page 46, where it says, "The principal may, as a disciplinary measure, remove a student from privileges." And when you go further into that, it says, "The superintendent shall provide each principal," and it says each principal again. Is that supposed to be multiple principals? Because it says the principal may, and then it says each principal.
I think this is copied right from the policy language.
Okay, so that's just the way it's supposed to read?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting, okay. It just looks funny when you, like, read it. I'm like, wait, what do you mean? Is it the principal and assistant principal? Is it like, it kind of leads that?
Yeah, I think they're...the intention in the policy is that it's like district-wide, so like each principal in the district. But then, you're right, like, the fact that it's in an individual school handbook, it does read it.
Well, or even if it's just odd, I would have thought it would have said the principal, you know, principals plural would have even made...I was just curious. If something like that happens, obviously, it's school-specific. It's not district-specific for the student.
Right.
"The superintendent shall provide each principal with a copy of the regulations and shall have each principal sign the document, which shall be placed in their personnel file." The principal's file or the student's? The student's file.
The principal's.
It sounds like the principal's the one that got in trouble, but they're talking about removing a student. "The principal may, as a disciplinary measure, remove a student from privileges such as extracurricular activities and attendance at school-sponsored events based on the student's misconduct. Such a removal is not subject to the remainder of this policy law or regulation. The superintendent shall provide each principal with a copy of the regulations promulgated by DESI and shall have each principal sign a document acknowledging receipt thereof, which shall be placed in their personnel file."
So that'll...95 steps that are included. Right.
You miss one. Yeah. And then it goes through, right, like, suspension, emergency room, like, there are all different ways to say the same thing, and then there's different steps
Okay. Any...anything else in this section? Any other questions? Next one, Lisa?
The next change is on page 77 through page 83.
Do you want to give a brief summary of the changes?
Sure. So SWISS is a program that we began to use late winter. It goes along with PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. And it's a system that we can use to track behaviors. And as we're trying to get better about using data, one piece we know is looking to see what kinds of data there are about student behavior, the times of the day, the locations, the days of the week. And so this is an explanation of what SWISS is. And then following that, we have our RAMS core values. And this is a matrix which helps for students and staff to understand these are the expectations in these areas of a school that show... Like, in the hallway, if you see trash in the hallway, one thing, one way of being respectful is picking up the trash or greeting people as you walk by. And so we're really trying to be very clear about what we expect for...to see of students and their behaviors in the school settings.
Okay, thank you.
And then starting on page, at, on page seventy-nine, we're trying to get clear about possible consequences for misbehavior in like a three-tiered system. So it's progressive discipline and it's appropriate to the student and the number of incidents. So we've tried to spell that out a little bit more clearly and have ranges of consequences.
Excuse me. Any questions or comments in this area? Next.
I think that's it. At the very end, there's, there are a couple of letters which have just been updated for the years. And these are letters in regards to absences, just so families know that we have these and this is what we'll be using.
Just on page eighty-two, under horse playing, it's supposed to be pushing, it's the first word, it says pu-ing, pu- putting, just needs the S. On eighty-two, under horse playing.
Okay. Pu-ing.
Pu- putting.
I just looked at it too, I didn't even see it.
I hope if I put my glasses on, I'm squinting.
Is this graph a little fuzzy or is it blurry?
If you wore those glasses that you got.
No, I've got like contacts and I couldn't even see my computer without them. And my last overall comment is just, obviously this is in draft form, but for the final, I assume the, the layout and everything is gonna be more cohesive, the size of font and font type and all that is gonna be all cohesive. Because right now it's a little jumbly. Obviously soon this will just be, it's draft form.
Yeah, there's a few. We'll, we'll clean it up.
Okay. Just easier to read. Keep it cohesive.
So do we want to have, do we want to vote on it now with the few changes out, or do you guys want to see it again before we vote on it?
So we can...
I'm sorry, what?
We can vote now to allow it as long as the amendments that we spoke about are made?
Mm-hmm. And what, does that include the letter?
Uh, yeah, so I mean, I don't, I don't know, do, I don't know that we need to see the letter. I didn't know if anyone wanted to see the letter, so that's why I was, I was just, you know, I wanted to circle back about that. That's what, what I'm getting to, so. So what do we, what do we think? Do we, are we hard over on what the letter says, or do we want to just vote to approve with the changes that we had discussed?
I'm finding a vote for approve with the amendments that we discussed. As long as the administrators of the school are happy with the document, they're the ones that'll be executing it. So if there's any gaps in it that people could exploit, I'm sure that they would've identified and modified those prior to presenting them to us.
Well, a lot of it for me is just, which again, it's a draft, it's a lengthy document, it's really just format and, you know.
But they usually all get changed.
Things like that, so it's, right, I'm not too concerned about that. I'm sure even afterwards, we could probably get another look at it and just say, hey, you know, if it's an adjustment, I don't need to reapprove saying, oh, you know, this space right here doesn't look, you know, line up with this graph, so I'm also, I don't, the context, in my opinion, I'm good with, which is what, that's what our focus is.
So with that, I'll take the motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve the East Meadow handbook.
Can I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
This one's only a hundred and twelve pages.
Perfect. Are the highlights?
Yep, the highlights, the green highlights are there.
What about like this one?
Hi, Mr. Rodriguez.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm doing well, yourself?
Fantastic.
Excellent.
Good to see you, thanks for coming to me.
Of course.
Good catch, Mr. Durham, I've seen your updates there.
I have to say, I'm sort of sad about the phone numbers. It's so ridiculous, but.
It's weird to say four nine three, right?
Y'all are four oh nine. So you're a four oh nine, not four nine three, your superintendent's office?
I don't know my number anymore. I don't know any of the numbers anymore.
Perfect, I just want to check because the, the extension, the extension matches because it's in that five thousand realm, but it says four oh nine and all the others say four nine three, so I just want to make sure that that...
That is correct.
Okay.
We had the same question, but we doubted and it was the correct number.
I am gonna change my phone now, because I have forgotten. I will forget. Okay, any, any, so it's the highlights, okay.
Right, so the green indicates the updated information and the red is the old information that's being deleted.
Okay. And Mike saw the, we need to update the school committee to reflect him.
Okay. You want to walk us through the changes?
Sure.
Otherwise, there's a lot of silence and I'm sure the people who are watching it are just watching us read it.
Okay.
Actually, I had a quick question on the fir-, on the very first one with people's names. Is Stacy gonna be listed on this one, on the cover, similarly to East Meadow, because she's not on it right now?
Yeah, we should add, that piece should be consistent, yes.
Okay, I'll make note of that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, there are a few areas that had some notable changes, and so if you'd like, I can either address those areas first, or we can sort of grow chronologically through the handbook, which would you prefer?
Whichever you think is more important.
Okay. All right, well, so I guess if we go down to page, uh, page ten, the handbook acknowledgement is being removed from the handbook here. It's being added to the demographic form that will be submitted electronically directly by the family members. And they'll get all the documentation digitally and will be able to acknowledge their receipt through that method, as opposed to a separate form and separate document. The next section on academics, beginning at the bottom of page ten, is highlighted in green. There wasn't content changed, but we did expand, we did amend the formatting and then expanded on information just to provide some clarity to families in terms of how credits are accrued and how students can progress towards graduation and what the expectations are. Those requirements did not change, we just tried to make them a little bit more explicit for families to, to be able to understand sort of what the expectations are for their students. The changes that are more significant are when we get to the promotion retention policies. And so at the top of page twelve, the bolded line that indicates that all ninth graders must successfully pass English and math in order to advance to sophomore status regardless of credit status was one shift that, that we're making for, for the coming year. Similarly, there was not a promotion or retention policy for the junior high. And so students could be promoted without passing any of their courses, and we thought that was something that needed some attention. And so we looked at other schools that had similar models and structures as Grant Junior Senior High School and identified some best practices and sort of modeled the policy after, after those schools.
And I think too, here important to know, similar to some of the conversation we had around East Meadow and like the bus suspension, I think each case is looked at individually and we've worked hard to say, all right, you might not have passed any, but here's your path to go from seventh to eighth grade or eighth to ninth grade. It's not like you go back and you're just repeating it. Like, we want to make sure that they're being supported and encouraged to find their way in this. It's not about disciplining them, it's about saying, we have expectations and we want to make sure we're supporting you and you're rising to meet them.
Right.
So it says, "Students who pass only one or none of their core subjects will be retained and will not have the option of summer school. Students who do not pass three or more core courses..." Okay, I misread it, I had to say it out loud again.
That's okay.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's fine. Right, so, you know, it's progressive, right? So the, the more courses that a student does not pass, then the more support that they'll need in order to sort of catch up, maybe be promoted to the following grade. And so that's sort of what is outlined here. Again, the summer school policy didn't really change, we just sort of formatted it in a way that we thought would provide a little more clarity. The next significant change comes down to our tardy policy. We have a policy in place for students to recover absen- Oh, sorry. That would be on page twenty, page twenty. So while we have, had a policy in place for students to recover absences, so that it does not have a detriment on their, their grades or their credit accrual, we didn't have a mechanism in place for students to do so when they've accrued a number of tardies. And so we've developed a mechanism for them to do that. There's a table here that shows potential sort of consequences, but it's, it's really more of sort of interventions and how we can communicate with, with families. And the tardy improvement plan is a way for students to develop a support network and improve their punctuality to school. And so it's designed in a way that the more days that they are consecutively on time, then the more tardies they could potentially have recovered. So not only are they recovering the days that they were late to school, but we're also encouraging them to be on time more often. So we're hoping that that has obviously a significant impact on, on their academic gains.
Clarifying question, because I'm new to the high school policies, kind of East Meadow, but now going over there, it says, please, the very first thing underneath the attendance is please use the absence dismissal form when your student is being, is absent, you know, or dismissed tardy to school. That's traditionally what I'm used to at East Meadow, but then for reporting an absence, it says to call. So if you're gonna report an absence, do we do the absence form and call?
You could do either.
You can do either?
Yes.
So I think for reporting an absence, that might be helpful to note, because if that's the very first thing you're seeing underneath the attendance, it just, to me, would make sense that that's how I do it. Otherwise, someone like me is, I have no idea, I'm gonna bother you both with.
You're gonna do it both.
I may do both, and I'm not gonna know which one's supposed to be first.
I do both anyway. Yeah.
Okay.
And then I freak out, because I usually do the form late and I call, and then someone calls me and says, "Did you know your kid was out?" And then I call and like...
I called twice, sent an email.
And then I text Ally, I'm like, "Did you, did you not see my kid? Is there a problem? The Find My says." The Find My says she's not.
All right.
All right. We will address that and clarify. So moving forward, um, find the page of the next, right, and so the language regarding due process and suspensions was prepared by our attorney, and we have incorporated that language that is in compliance with state law and DESI regulations. And so we essentially removed the old language and replaced it with the new language in the same sections. And that is a pretty lengthy section. Couple of other things that we've adjusted per, or with the guidance of our attorney was the Title I language at the beginning of the text, as well as the family amending some of the language in the family compact, as well as the common law name change for individuals seeking to do that within the school. And then the other sort of significant change is the cell phone policy. We presented a survey to caregivers and students and staff members, gathered their responses, and then went with sort of the policy that received the most support. That policy can be found on page...
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, yes. Because of availability of sort of the phone homes that, or the lack of availability of the phone homes, we had to pivot and move in, in a different direction by different item than what was pictured in the proposals that were shared. So we had put in a line about, in the event of emergency, there was a handle where the case could be carried out. Unfortunately, those were in limited supply and we weren't able to secure them for every classroom. And so instead, it will be an open holder where students can deposit their phones and see them. And if there is an emergency on the way out, they can certainly retrieve their phones as they exit the classrooms. But in an effort to provide some consistency across the entire junior, senior high school, the policy would be applicable to all students, grade seven through twelve, whereas in the past, there was one policy for the junior high and a separate policy for the high school, and that provided a lot of confusion. And so we wanted to... And so we wanted to sort of make it easier for everyone in the building, students and staff alike, in terms of what the expectations are regarding cellphone use. The proposal to which garnered the most support was the one where students would have access to their phones during transition, during break and during lunch, but not during instructional time. And so they would merely deposit their phones in a phone home on the teacher's desk when they come into the classroom and then get it back when they exit the room at the end of the period.
And to be clear for mine and the committee's understanding, instructional time, when I have to go to the bathroom 15 minutes into a classroom period, that's still instructional time, correct?
Correct, and the phone remains in the phone home.
So you're not taking the phone to the-
No.
Sorry if I missed it, I was trying to read. Can you just explain the phone home? What exactly is the phone home?
Sure, so it's a container where it has slots allocated. They're the width of a cellphone, so they can just place their cellphone in there. And it will just live on the teacher's desk during the class period.
So they're going to have like a signed, like, you know, student A is like number 12 in the phone home? Or they're just all going to put them in there and hope to not mix them up on their way out? I'm sure they know their phones, but-
They know their phones, they're just, I hope there's no issues with that, taking the wrong phone or whatever.
That was my only question, like, so, yeah, my daughter actually has one for swim now they have that. But they're, they all get like a number. So it's literally just like it's a cubby for your phone. Your phone goes in that cubby, that's your spot for, you know, just because-
Similarly, we did that with the, even like when we first got the Chromebooks. They each had like their own charging cord.
Exactly. I just worry just that where someone gets it really quick and the whole thing goes, like, I mean, just breaking the phones.
Mike.
So I'm sorry.
That's what it looks like.
Very cool.
Okay.
We do understand that there are some students who require to have their phones on them for medical reasons, right? Students who may have an insulin pump or something like that that's controlled by their phone. Those students would obviously be exempt from this policy because they need to have it on their person at all times. And so for those students with medical 504s or IPs, then we would make those accommodations for those students.
Should that perhaps be a blurb in the policy?
It is.
It is right below that red line.
Sorry, yeah.
And my only other piece to this is that I know we keep calling it a policy, but it's really a procedure, right? Because we have like a technology use policy in place. So I know it's being nitpicky, but I'm just wondering if the wording should kind of look a little bit different in the handbooks, whether it's a cellphone procedure or something like that, because-
Yeah, I think that makes sense too. I feel that sometimes when we talk about cellphone policy, the policy gets set by the school committee and the part, right? The procedures we follow go under that policy, so.
Okay.
Do we need to have anything in here that removes us of liability if someone's phone is stolen or taken? Or someone uses the code and goes in and puts something on, you know, takes the wrong phone and then uses-
Check with Kimberly.
You know, uses it and put something bad on Snap or Instagram or something using someone else's phone?
I'll double check with Kimberly now.
And then any liability if someone takes, you know, there's 700, 800 dollar phones if someone takes it. And we've made this policy and procedure and we're taking them out of the responsibility of the students and something happens when it's on a teacher's desk or something and it gets broken or whatever, are we putting ourselves at risk of liability for them to come back and say, I'd like $700 or $800 or $1,500 to replace a new phone?
And I don't want to quote Kimberly because I don't know that it was her exact words, but we talked about that at one point. And I think part of it was the communication out. So now people have the option of knowing this is the policy. You can bring your phone and take that chance, or you can leave your phone at home or in your car or someplace that you feel safe. So, but I will get an exact clarification on it to see if we should add a line.
Yeah, because if we're saying we're absolved from it, I think it should be there. But it's, you know, when someone has the ability to do something, but then they're regulated to do something that it's no longer under their control, it worries me that, you know, they're so freaking expensive. I wouldn't want to start having-
Yep, okay.
And those are all of the significant changes in the handbook. Are there any questions about any of those or anything else?
So we took out a section on inappropriate behavior. Is that, is there something that takes, replaces that somehow?
I believe that one was about public displays of affection. And it was removed because it hasn't been behavior that's been an issue or anything that has needed to be addressed.
Any other questions?
Just for cohesiveness, on page 30, where we talk about sports offerings, just a comment, the Underwinter Sports for swimming, it says, co-op with South Hadley. I might just also add hosted at Holyoke High School because some of the other ones say, you know, so and so is the host. It's just an update, I'm sure it was from previously.
And I think along those same lines, just a small piece, but on page 29, at the very top where it says, important information for 2022 Fall Athletics. Oh, yep. That's all I had.
Do we still need to have socially distance yourself from our mothers?
No.
Nope.
That's in that top section too. Parents guardians will be able to attend games and we require to follow Granby Junior's public safety guidelines. Socially distance yourselves and once the game is over, please avoid group gatherings. So that, I don't know if we, we may not want to have group gatherings.
Must just be nostalgic. Yeah, we can remove those.
Remove both?
Yeah.
Okay.
I found a couple other places too and places that we had some of that language still lingering.
Look at Ben, bad penny.
You rushed so hard to like get it in there. And then when it like came out, it was like defined it in every place, so.
Because we didn't call it out.
Yeah, some places it was just included as like a line there, it wasn't, so.
And then same thing, just with esports under spring sports, just so it has the same look as the fall. Just write, you know, begins whatever spring instead of right now, it just is blank.
And boys volleyball, don't we have JV for that now?
We do now.
Yeah. And swimming is South Hadley and Holyoke, it's tri-town now. Hosted by, and it's hosted by Holyoke. Assuming it still goes. Anything else? Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
Make the motion to approve the Granby Junior Senior High School, the proposed changes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the employee one.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. So there really are few changes in here. Actually, as I read through it right before I came over here, I identified a couple other changes that I'm messaging Jackie about, like the field trips. It's page, what page are we? Thirty, it's on page 36. So the policy is the updated policy, but the text below needs to be updated to reflect that. So we got the link in right and we just need to switch that. I just saw in the text too, there was the old superintendent's phone number, so putting the new number in there. And then there was one other place that I asked Jackie. Oh, we created over the last year, we created a substitute teacher's handbook. So when new subs come in, they get, so we have substitute teacher information. So I just asked Jackie that we add the link into that section, so teachers have access to that. Other than that, this one was, there weren't any changes at all. A lot of this is policy language is put in a place where it's easier to find for the teachers rather than having to look through the whole policy manual.
Any questions or comments for this one? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee handbook as shown.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is discussion of the impact of the storm.
Thank you.
My least favorite. Is there any-
So I have asked John Sullivan to be here, so he's present, John, if you want to come up. And David Lukashevitz as well. So I think at this point, we're recognizing when we're impacted by something like this, it isn't specific to one department, right? Like David, while he might handle the day-to-day and certain things, John might get the alarm call based on it. Or a teacher might recognize a port's not working. So, so we have kind of taken approach this time. I think last time we said it's a fluke, but we're through it. And this time, since it happened, I think Todd, David, John and I have met every three to four days for updates on things. We started with, I would say, a pretty significant laundry list of things that were impacted. And we have progressively shortened that laundry list. And I think if you remember the last time, there were days in the past three weeks where that laundry list, while it was getting shorter, all of a sudden it got longer because something got fixed, which brought us to a new problem that we didn't know until that first problem got fixed. So at this point, I have notified Chris Martin. He asked for a description of what happened. I sent that to him so he could open an insurance claim. We were without, I think one of the biggest issues was the well pump was down, which supplies water to both buildings. John got on it pretty quickly and was able to get it back to a point where we could manually bring the pressure up into the two buildings so that we had toilets and running water. That would have been really difficult to sustain that for any period of time if school was in full session. I think, you know, John was doing it every three or four hours with 30 or so people on campus. So 700, he probably would have been standing in that same spot all day. But, you know, and I don't know, John, if you got it from the electrician, but we did reach out for an assessment from the electrician we've been working with. I don't know if we have that yet, but I'll make sure that it's shared with you all when we do have it. But for us, at this point, like, we don't have any indication that it was a direct lightning strike to either building and thinking back to the one last July, was it? We don't believe that was a direct. David and I were actually on campus for this and the storm came in pretty quickly and low and the thunder and lightning was on top of, I was in the building next door, was on top of us pretty quickly. It was startling and I'm on the front of the 202 side, David's on the backside. And he filled me in the next day that he was seeing lightning crash into the backfield, which is what the electrician suspects, is that the lightning is hitting somewhere in the backfield. And because we have so many things running through that, pipes and wiring and things like that, it's hitting there and it's running up back into-
Pump house.
The pump house specifically. And I think when John recognized the alarm started going off this night, on this night, I think five of the breakers in the pump house had popped and a couple of the things, which that was the first indication that we were in this situation again.
Cameras.
Camera, yep, yep. So, yeah, it's, there's been a lot of work done. It's still not quite where it needs to be, but the HVAC unit was impacted here at East Meadow. It's back up and running. One of the VFD cards for the boilers next door has been replaced. Pump house had a number of VFD drives that had to be replaced. We're waiting a replace for a breaker. We had modems that were burnt out. Classrooms is still a little bit up in the air because we're not up to our normal, how we function normally. But David has run a number of tests in about 10 to 12 classrooms at East Meadow, all in the renovation and the new part of the building. And he's been able to get audio and video and electrical ports and things working in those spaces. That doesn't mean we're 100% in the clear, but that field irrigation was impacted. A controller had to be replaced there. Yeah, pretty significant once again. So, I don't know, I'm sure I missed a few things, but I don't know, Todd, John, David.
I just have a question with all of these storms and a little confused about our lightning protection. So is that not working or is it, did it fail repeatedly? What's the status with the-
There's really no such thing as lighting protection. There's just lightning rods on the roof and it directs the lightning down to the ground. So if it hits-
Those are in place if it strikes the building.
If it strikes the building. Like if you look on any tall buildings, they have a rod. And the lightning hits the rod, falls wires down and it gets grounded into the ground. That's not what's happening here. It's hitting out in the field and there's wires and pipes from where the well is, about 500, 600 feet out. So if it hits out there, it hits the ground and then electricity just binds metal and it just follows it right to the pump house. That's the first thing. So when I got to the pump house, it was dead. Everything in it was just blown. And then I came into the building here, cameras were down, walked into the boiler room and there's cards, every room has these little ALC cards and they control temperature, fans and everything. And the one for the pump house was dead. So it went from the field to the pump house, followed the wire right into the boiler room. And then it just kind of branched off from there into this building and hit stuff. So it's like lightning protection doesn't fail, it just hits someplace that you don't know where it's going to hit.
So one of the things I think that we've talked about with the assessment from the electrician and the electrical contractor is what, is there something that we can do as a next step to better protect our facilities? And so we're waiting for that report.
Yep, I haven't gotten that.
Yep, I haven't gotten that. Um, he, he said, um, surge protectors on the electrical panels throughout the building. So if it does come in the building, it'll hit that surge protector, and it won't go into the panel and into the building.
There weren't surge protectors put in when this building was built?
No, these are, no, these are just like above and beyond.
The required.
Yeah, like if you, you know, we've been struck by lightning twice out there, it's, you know.
Well, that's just it, I mean, sitting back, looking at it, since this building has been done, redone, the, the schools have been here since the sixties.
Yep, but now the well and all electrical is all underground from pump house, straight out to the back of the woods.
So, so that's the something that's different.
That's different, yes.
Um.
The well wasn't in front of the school.
But people, I mean, it just, you have to admit, it's very coincidental. I mean, it's not anything that we've done wrong, but sitting here, we've, I mean, from, was it two Julys ago? We had the, like, the building was still really new, and we had, we had that problem, and now here we are, and we've got more problems. We, we still hadn't fixed everything from the first problem.
Well, this is the same night AIC got hit by lightning.
I get, I.
I mean, I was home, and my phone was, my phone was blowing up with alarms, and I'm watching the lightning.
It's a cer- super vicious storm, I'm, I'm not denying that, no one's denying that.
I mean, you.
The problem is, is that we have this, we still hadn't recovered from the first storm, and now we have a second storm. And I don't want to have a third storm next week, and we get zapped again. It just seems highly coincidental that there's something that's new, and every time there's a severe storm, I mean, the one that happened the last time was a really bad storm. And they think it was a telephone pole out front that got struck.
So if I can interject, um, what's different is that this building, um, unlike the previous building before the renovation, is all digitized, and has, it's, everything that John described and the superintendent described has to do with electronics. Um, computer cards, computer controllers that run the physical plant. We didn't have that stuff prior to the renovation. We had nineteen sixties equipment here, that was all analog, motors, you know, analog switches, gauges, whatever. Um, so all that new technology came in, and that is more vulnerable to this, um, these type of weather events, which is something we just learned, because obviously if we knew this when the building was being designed, the engineers and the planners probably would have done, um, some, something different. So, so the course of that, you know, so now they're revisiting that, and they're suggesting ideas on new safeguards. Um, I will also say that these safeguards reduce and hopefully minimize the chance of problems, doesn't totally prevent it. Um, I had a, at the high school, um, I have a, uh, battery UPS, which is a high-level one that runs some of the, um, network operations, and that was affected. And that system has a communication card on it that's supposed to send a message out when the device is failing, and there's also indicator lights on it that are supposed to, um, indicate a failure. That, those safeguards do not work, yet the device failed during the storm. Um, when I inquired this week about that, I was told, well, it's seven years old, it's passed, it's used for life. That was the answer I got. But, um, you know, I, I think that all we can do is our best to try, try to minimize and reduce these occurrences, and hopefully, yeah, prevent them, but we, I mean, this building is like filled with electronics.
Yeah, but lots of buildings are filled with electronics, and we're, seem to be having some kind of a storm electronic problem that, you know, storms happen all the time, and so we just, we can't be worried every time it rains that we're gonna be shut, shut down. You know, we, if we start having problems with the well pump, the next time there's another bad storm, and we have to close school, we're gonna run through no school days pretty quickly. You know, because it was three, a good couple of days, we wouldn't have been able to have school, because there's no water. And so it's not anything that anyone's doing here, it just, it seems like we've got to, maybe we have to be more proactive about having, contingency plans or something.
Well, so you said that, that you, um, requested from the electrician, like, uh, suggestions on moving forward, you know, things that we could do. I don't know if there's lightning protection for the pump house, if that's not already there, or other, like they said, surge protectors and things like that. I'd be interested to see what that comes in at.
Oh, yeah, there's lightning protection on the pump house, right?
There is.
It's coming from around.
Interesting.
Because, I mean, they saw lightning hit the backfield.
Right, oh, no, I don't doubt, I was just.
It's, it, you know, it just followed right up, like, I mean, I followed the wires right to the, right into this building, into the, um, so into the boiler room, which is down this hall on the other side of the door, and, I mean, it went from there all the way there on little, little, little wires.
And we had hoped that we'd have the report for tonight, but I would expect we would have it for Friday, so I'll make sure I put it in the update. So that way you have the information, and, you know, if there's certain things, we, I think we all agree that it is coincidental. It's feeling like Groundhog Day a bit, and, um, so pretty immediately, I did request that John get an assessment from the electrical contractor, and, um, they were willing to do that, and I know some of it has been in conversation, but they agreed to put some, some things in writing, so we'll make sure that you have that, and if there's next steps that you would like us to pursue, certainly would be open to that.
But there was problems at the high school too, right? Not as many.
Yeah, I would say ninety percent, well, David's thing, and then one thing on the boiler there. So ninety percent of the issues seem to be specific to this building.
But I mean, we're not, so if it is the digitized thing, then that worries me, because we're not, we're not the newest building around, and we're not the most high-tech building around, so if there's something that, you know, yeah.
So the issues at the pump house have been corrected, right? Like, the water flow is fine now, and all the other issues have been mitigated, and you're taking the steps to?
There's one remaining.
Okay.
The, the base breaker between, so if we lose power, the generator is there, and so the breaker that would switch when it goes from utility to, uh, the generator, we're waiting for replacement for that.
Okay, and you've also taken the additional steps to try to plan to have the breakers to protect it in the future, so.
Well, we've just requested, like, right, like, what would the suggestions or recommendations?
What would it look like? We're not doing the surge protectors yet, it's what would it look like, that's gonna come up.
I'll just stand out back with the rake the next time, I'll take one for the team.
I'm just surprised that, I didn't realize there was lightning protection in that building too. So it's hitting the field and coming basically all here.
Up, up the well pipe, up the, there's, there's electricity going from pump house all the way out to the field, and then you have a, we have a brand-new generator that has wires all underground. You know, everything's underground, it's all on metal pipes.
Snack Shack checked, or?
I mean, there's always.
It just. And the new, the scoreboard?
Um, I don't know if the scoreboard was checked.
There's, there's, I checked power to it, I didn't turn it on.
We should probably turn that on before the season starts.
So, I mean, that, that's even more of a, it hit the field, because the snack shack was first, that little controller for irrigation went out. You know, it just followed its way up, right up to, right up to here.
Because, I mean, the Booster Club just did a bunch of work there, so I want to make sure that that.
I went to the building, everything was fine in the building, there was power there.
Okay.
I just didn't turn on this scoreboard.
And what about the irrigation?
Irrigation control, um, control board went out, but was fixed within days.
So what's left for the insurance claim?
What's that?
What would be effective for the insurance claim?
Oh, wow.
A lot.
I think everything we've talked about, we would plan to include, and then I think the un, the unknown is the scary part, that I think we're waiting to find out, because a modem that, from Comcast got fried. So Comcast came and replaced the modem, but then there were still issues connected to what that, what runs off that modem, that we just got a quote on replacing a server for that this morning. We just got that quote last night, we just got the quote on that, um, to replace the server for that, because the server's not functioning, so. Those are the things, it's like, check the modem, modem fix, servers not work, so.
The downstream stuff, and then my only other thing is, I think, is there a defibrill, defibrillator out on the?
An AD.
Yeah.
It'll be put out once the season starts.
Okay, so it's not been sitting out there, no, because I was like, oh, that would be great, we were counting on that, and it's been zapped, right? Supercharged.
Jumpstart.
But, yeah, no, it doesn't stay out there at all times, but fortunately, at this point, it wasn't.
Because I think there's a power housing there too, so just, you know, right, isn't, no?
No, it's battery up, so it just lives in a.
In one of the case, okay.
Yeah.
Did any, is there anything relating to kind of like the water table too? And any of the lightning and that traveling differently with like the construction or different places like that, and changing what that would, the traveling would look like?
I think it's a lot of sand, so it's very, very sandy out there. It's, you know, it's not dirt, it's not thick, compact dirt.
But I think what Jill's saying is like, the water table's so high right now, because of all the rain we've gotten, is that potentially a contributing factor to our vulnerability, right?
And I'm just thinking about it, like, at, at my house, like, there were no wires, there were no underground anything, and they were outside, and it just traveled through the wa- water, found an extension cord, and got zapped. Like, there was, there was nothing.
I mean, it'll, it'll find anything, and as long as it can follow it, and it's not grounded, it's just gonna continue to go.
It's just supposed to find the highest point, which is supposed to be that lightning protection. That's why I had asked if it was, because they can fail, the lightning protection systems can.
Yeah, I mean, if it gets hit, it's gonna blow that, that point.
Hitting in the middle of an open field, which if that's all you're surrounded by.
Or to even Stephanie's point, right, hopefully not, but like the scoreboard or the backstop, those big tall metal structures that are out there, so maybe it didn't start on the ground, maybe it started there and ran to, I think that's the part where it's like, I feel like it's a little bit of guesswork on our.
Right, well, you'll never know.
You'll never know.
I don't think I'm, like, gonna put my finger on where this lightning struck, but.
I look for damage everywhere, I didn't see anything, nothing. I mean, if it hit a lightning rod on this roof, we'd have a hole in the roof.
Right.
It just, I mean.
This is like what happened to Corneones at AIC.
Right.
Right, you know, and that was the older, older building, but, you know, here, it's a rubber, it's a rubber roof.
The same age as the high school.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's true, that is true.
You're gonna take those, you know, right?
Maybe, maybe a little bit.
But I'll, I'll get that, um, report, I'll call tomorrow. You know, I mean, it, I was doing the parts first.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Of course, oh, absolutely, yeah.
You know, yeah.
It's, it's not, it's not a huge deal, it's just a curiosity thing, if there's something little that we can do, you know, do we put something near where the well is, do we, you know?
I would put it in the, I'd put it in the, um, pump house, that'd be the first one, I'd put anything.
We've talked about potentially for capital improvement, again, depending on.
Because the first storm didn't go through the pump house, the first storm just.
No, no, I had problems at the pump house. So I mean, the first one, I don't know, I mean, that was just, the building was affected, but I had problems, pump house all the way in. It's like, was the same, um, same stuff that was hit in the building without the lights? Like, we lost the lights the last storm, that was a big major problem.
So when we were originally in communication, he's like, I think we're good, the lights are on.
Right.
But then, as he further investigated, he's like, the lights are like the only thing working.
That was it.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions on the store? All right, first read policy JIC.
Thank you, John, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Good evening.
Um, so JIC really, and I think I included this in the update a couple of weeks ago, maybe not, but, um, the policy isn't so much the change, it is the source from MASC, it was updated in two thousand twenty-two, and then the reference, so really, this all stems from legislation that was voted on, I think, last August, that went into effect in early November, um, that impacted schools' ability to remove students, basically suspend students, so like, you had to prove more things before you could allow for an expansion, a suspension, so there were extra steps taken. So MASC did update it, um, and as we were looking at handbooks and things like that, this was an area that came to our attention. So I know, I, I reached out to George and Jill, and they met last week, um, so I don't know, Jill, if you have any?
Yeah, no, I mean, George and I just reviewed what was here, um, and then wanted to move forward, everything else proposed. Um, it was, we felt like it was one of those things that we didn't want to make any adjustments to.
It's better, it's better as is, rather than us trying to put a stamp on it, right?
And then, so the spaces, or there's just additional spacing that'll just be deleted or fixed afterwards, or is it just me?
Where?
Page four is blank.
Page four is blank, page two has.
Oh, I'm looking at my copy, I'm sorry.
But, yeah, it'll be all cleaned up.
The word document that we worked off of was three, four, five, six, it was all together.
Okay, great.
So we can, um, everyone read it, and then we will put it on for second read and vote for, um, next week, unless, I mean, it is, it's an MASC-adapted policy, so if we're comfortable, we can vote on it now. It's up to you, up to you all.
I'm comfortable with, given what it is, it's not really our take on it, it's.
It's MASC.
It's MASC, so.
And we, and we did technically approve it, because it's in both handbooks.
I was just gonna say, we, I was gonna say, we actually left the old one in the handbooks, but this would streamline that a little bit, because then we could move forward, put this in the handbooks.
And we did vote, both of those, um, votes were with amendments as stated, so.
All right then, yeah, I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve policy JIC.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, continuing business, the enrollment dashboard.
So I don't think the enrollment dashboard will be really any use to you all at this point. I think the first time that it will be helpful will be our first meeting in September, um, because there is movement daily right now, and the staff are coming in, people are registering, even some school choice students who were accepted haven't responded, that they're going to take that seat, or they responded that they are, and then changed their mind based on whatever. So it is, this is the time of year where I think it is probably moving the most, this probably last week or two, and the next two or three weeks. Um, so I think September, our first meeting in September, we'll have a, we should have a better grasp on the dashboard. In terms of school choice, um, we have twenty, um, students that we've accepted that have responded yes. Again, that does not mean that they're all gonna follow through with the registration and enrollment, like they're still, but twenty of, um, the people that we had reached out to had responded yes, um, but we still have seats in some grades. We only have waiting, we do have a waiting list for first grade and fourth grade. Uh, first grade has eight people on that waiting list, fourth grade has two people on that waiting list. Um, so if spots became available, they would go to their lottery numbers, um, and we would offer a position. So the waiting list is good to have, but, um, it doesn't also mean that the person who's number one will accept that next spot, so. We've done our two lotteries, so right now, if there's spaces available, um, we're really doing acceptances on a rolling basis.
Any questions or anything on the dashboard? Or in school choice, we kind of touched on it both. Any other specific, um, questions on that?
Just when we meet next time and we do look at this, I assume she's gonna do this anyways, but could we just, um, update the, even though there's not much movement, the June-July numbers, just for comparison, so we can see a full picture?
Yeah, it's not been updated since May, or there'll probably be a new one twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah.
But just to, no, just so that we can see the, the whole year.
So you see the summer movement and everything?
Right.
Yeah, and I think last year, what we did in September, like, we even included the graduates and all that.
Right.
So, okay.
Um, anything else? All right, district, district improvement plan.
So, again, things are always. So, again, things are always moving quickly. So we have, the next thing on the agenda is the strategic plan. And so the strategic plan is designed to be our three to five year blueprint of, no, the next thing.
Oh, got it. Okay. I misunderstood what you said. Sorry.
So the strategic plan is designed to be that three to five year blueprint of what our goals are, how we want to make those changes. So what we've done is we've taken the district improvement plan and we've taken pieces of that strategic plan and said like, here are some things that we want to prioritize in year one, right? And I think it was Jill who said at one of the meetings around the strategic plan was like, there's a lot in this and it is. It's dense, even though sometimes something reads like it's four or five bullets. Sometimes each of those bullets has two or three things within that. So what we've tried to do with the district improvement plan is to start to hone in a little bit more and say, in the twenty-three, twenty-four year, in these four areas, high quality instruction, um, supportive and safe learning environment, communication collaboration, community engagement, and systems and structures, these are some of the things that we want to tackle. And what we've done is to set some goals for this year in relation to each of those objectives. So that we can better monitor our progress, right? Because I think if we're gonna say, hey, come talk to me in three years about this objective we have in the strategic plan, we're never gonna hone in enough on whether or not we're making the progress that we intend to. Um, so the intention here on my part was to say, all right, district leadership team, what are some priorities that make sense for us? How should we target those priorities? How do we want to measure those? Get this in good working order and now it goes to the schools and this should now inform the school improvement plan, which should then inform educators' plans, right? So, um, we're trying to be more thoughtful and more, not prescriptive, but to say like, these are some of the objectives that we have. These are some of our targets for this year. Now principals, assistant principals, building leadership teams, like what are some of the objectives you have? What are some of the goals that you're gonna set that are gonna help us as a district move towards those goals? So some of them are still broad because they are district wide, but, um, I do think we're getting more and more specific. We're trying to target certain things based on the data that we're seeing. Um, again, I won't read through the whole thing, um, but one thing that has been in every document we looked at today is our bullying plan. Um, and if you look under safe and supportive learning environment, one of the objectives that we've listed, list, listed is updating our bully, bullying policies and training, making sure we're reviewing that, making sure that it's up to date. Similar to the emergency operation plan, I think that's a plan that has sat idle for some time because we were in, we're in alignment, but it's, it doesn't feel like it's a live document. So we want to dig into it. Where do we need to see updates? Where might it make more sense to add new, um, supportive measures? Where have we, where have we already developed things that should be a part of this bullying plan? Um, so that's just one area, um, that, right? It's something that we use and live and work with all the time, but we want to make sure that we're in a good place with it. Um, we do have a, um, objective around promoting equity, diversity and inclusion. Um, and I know that that can be a hot button topic. I think we've had a couple of incidents. And I think our objective is to make sure that, like, people's backgrounds and beliefs are recognized and celebrated where they can be and respected. Um, and we want to take a more thoughtful approach to what that looks like, um, you know, and I understand that that can be polarizing, but we as a school system will not politicize that. We're doing it because it's the right thing to do for our students and our staff and every community to have some of those difficult conversations and help people understand that differences aren't bad things to have or doesn't, right? Doesn't mean that we treat somebody differently because of those differences. Um, so there's some work to be done and that's not specific to one school, one grade level, one community, one district. I think, um, it's, it's work that I think has been kind of put out in places and it's been on its own, where we see it as a way to say, this could be integrated into a lot of the things that we do, um, and not feel like it's separate. We want to create better structures for our data analysis and action planning at the both school and district level. Um, you know, professional development and really targeting literacy and math. I think based on some of what we've seen from our benchmark assessment data internally and M C A S data, we're trying to target specific areas and, um, some of those things might be, uh, for example, like grade three, maybe it's not the scope and sequence or the content that we're teaching. Maybe because this is the first time these students are taking the M C A, M C A S exam. Maybe they need some more time to work with the mechanisms that students have to navigate in that exam, dragging and dropping answers, creating the sequence without, right? Like there's certain things in these exams now that are different than the way that students might typically practice that. Um, so looking at all of those things and seeing where we might shift. Um, yeah, so like I said, I won't read through the whole thing, but just wanted to mention it to you. Certainly open to feedback. We, this is probably our second or third version of this that we've worked through at this point. Um, and I think we're pretty close to finalizing this. Um, but, yeah. Thoughts? And again, I don't expect that everyone will have read through it at this point and I'm happy to take thoughts if it comes up.
Appreciate the layout of this. I think it's really great. I love how it's set up to, you know, write out the objectives, the action steps. It's gonna be really easy to look back as we as a district are working on those steps to kind of check off those boxes and things that have been done. So I'm a list maker myself. I just appreciate the thought and the look of this.
Thank you.
And how some of them obviously are much bigger and then some, you know, I'm looking right here, like, you know, redesign the website like that could, you know, like you've got some really easier attainable kind of quick things and then others that obviously are a little, they're gonna take a lot more work. I think it's a good way to make it attainable.
Thank you. And I think part of the reason, and I'm hearing you see it too, is I want the leadership team and I to be able to have discussions about this every time we meet. Like where are we on this? What are we doing around this? Where, right? And I'd love to sit here in August and say, in June of twenty twenty-four, we'll have met all of these outcomes. I don't know that we, but I think we've tried to demonstrate that we have high expectations for students, staff, ourselves in putting this out there. And to your point, Stephanie, I think some of these things seem like low hanging fruit and other things feel like they're like at the top of the tallest tree.
I think it's good to have that mix though, because if it was all, you know, at the top of the tree and feeling like, you know, out of reach, it'll be nice to think how, everyone having this to be able to reflect on as you guys meet and take notes and, you know, kind of discuss. And I'm sure that some of these things are gonna evolve as well as you start, you know, chipping away at them.
I gotta, I gotta be honest. I read through, this is not negative, but I read through the first, under high quality instruction, I read through the, um, outcomes and I took a big breath and I was like, okay, like that's gonna look like a lot. And then I kept scrolling and I was like, oh, there's a whole lot more listed underneath. And I was like, that's gonna be a lot in a year. And then I was like, oh, right, yes, there's all these other areas, right? So, um, yeah, I, I think.
And then you get struck by lightning and you get a resignation or two and you're like.
Yeah, like I, I think, yeah, I think like Stephanie said, there's definitely things that feel like they're really attainable. And then there's other things that I think are gonna be a heavier lift, um, especially when you're talking about, you know, and I know we've talked about this, a minimum of one year's growth in, you know, averaging in math and literacy. And I think we had talked about the percentages being somewhat close to that for like data that was coming in for students. Um, but I'm thinking in that objective or outcome too, it was all students participating in that and that, is that true?
All students.
Is that what we're looking for with that?
So there, what we were trying to say is, so basically if I'm a
Like the teacher's class.
Third grade classroom teacher, like that classroom is gonna average a minimum of one year's growth. And again, I think there's gonna be some places where like it gets far exceeded and some places where it might not meet that.
Yep.
And I think that's part of the challenge in setting goals, like for this large swath of grades, content levels and things like that is, but I also think we want to make sure that we're demonstrating high expectations. And we had this conversation in the same room a couple of weeks ago about one year's growth. Like my feeling is like, is one year's growth high enough expectations? And I think like the leadership team, and I appreciate this, they'll push back and they'll say, if you're gonna average it because we have to recognize where student needs come through, right? And so we kind of like work together to flesh some of those things out. And I'm also one, since I first started as an administrator, that I would say, I would rather you say, eighty percent of my kids will demonstrate growth in this area and only have sixty percent of them meet it, than saying ten percent of my kids are gonna, and you exceed it because fifteen percent of your kids met there.
Yep.
Right? Because then there's still a forty percent gap and so even if we don't meet every goal, I think if we come close, it's a step in the right direction. Um, and I'm, I try to be clear with the leadership team and I want to be clear with staff when we roll this out that just because we didn't meet a specific outcome, it's not the end of the world. Like what progress are we making? What's the work that we've done around that? And maybe we need to take a different approach. Maybe it's about stepping back and saying, this isn't about content. This might be about the way that the, the mechanism that we're assessing them is designed or something like that. So can we look at that a different way? Can we try something? Or do we need to look at the scope and sequence and move something that is typically taught in February to October, November, so students have a better foundation?
Well, reading through this, I'm excited to see some of the stuff, like the portrait of a graduate sounds super intriguing to me. I'd like to know, like I can't wait to see what that looks like. And then the, the other one that I, the information technology pathway. And then just, it's so well thought out. Um, the hiring, exiting procedures manual, just things that, you know, we've talked about that have happened throughout the course of your tenure and different things. So it's nice to see that we're putting, putting some of those things down and, and moving towards them. It's, uh.
And I think it's nice to look at a well-rounded picture too. Like we've got the academics, but we're bringing in the, you know, the communication and the equality piece is so big. I think that like having that well-rounded student and educator and, you know, district is so important. So I appreciate seeing the equal thought in all of those areas rather than just, you know, we're really, we're gonna focus on this, you know.
Why do you think, um, the R E D I is gonna be divisive?
I don't know. I don't know that it will or won't be. I, I just think in some communities it has been. It's been met with some pushback and resistance and, um.
Why, why do you think that is?
I think it's people's perspectives.
Yeah, and I think context matters, right? Like so where your community might be or the demographics you could, like I, I don't, I can't say. And I'll be honest, when we put those two letters out last year around some incidents that we had, I didn't get any negative pushback. I didn't get like the, the little feedback that I got was positive and encouraging. And, um, so yeah, I, I think, I think sometimes too, people may misrepresent what we're trying to do in it. Like we're trying to push an agenda of some so- sort and, um, you know, I think even like the dinosaur project was an interesting look into that. And I think, Mike, you came in kind of two thirds of the way through that, but you know, some people were like, oh, you want it to be inclusive and welcoming? And what if it has a Black Lives Matter flag? What if it has a rainbow flag? What if it has? And then people are like, whoa, what if it had like a Spanish flag? What if it has an American flag? Because it's representing heritage, heritages that we have in our community. And so by having that conversation, I think people were like, okay, this isn't about one, like going far left or far right. This is about saying, how do we teach people to embrace diversity and recognize that diversity might not be something that should be divisive? So.
Does Granby currently have a, any shortcomings? I'm new to the community. That would require this type of push for R E D I?
Um.
Cause it's a big portion of the plan.
Yeah, I don't think Granby specifically. I just think there's places where in our curriculum, for example, if we took a look at the curriculum, what's, what types of authors are we reading? Or do we have a balance of between white, Latino, black, like different perspectives? Or are we just doing kind of the literary, the, the canon where it's all Shakespeare, Longfellow, those, right? Like, so I think looking at things in different places, it's not just about, it's about looking in our curriculum, looking at our policies, looking at practices that, and sometimes I think unintentionally might leave somebody on the outside. So I think really you're asking a good question because I think it's kind of like, part of it is being reflective and saying like, where might these issues exist? And if they do exist, can they be addressed? How can they be addressed? What might be those next steps?
Do we have a, a targeted demographic that we need to address before June of twenty twenty-four? Just one of the bullets?
Where are we?
Um.
So yeah, we put in by twenty twenty-four, again, like this is where I think we're trying to take a really big project and say like, if we can do this this year by saying like, what's our vision for this work? And what's the strategy that we're gonna, right? Not like jumping right into the work and just saying, everybody's gonna work hard doing a million different things. Let's try to get everybody on the same page and say like, what do we want this work to look like? So we have a vision. So we have something to guide us in the work. And I think that is what we're intending to be. The first step to say, this is what we want it to look like and this is the strategy, strategy we intend to use to get there. And similar to, I think Jen mentioned it too, like the portrait of a graduate, that's probably two, three year project in the communities who have done it and done it well that we've seen. So really we've said like, this year we're gonna create a portrait of a graduate design team that would be involved to kind of like, define the timeline for that work. Like how long is this gonna take? What are we gonna do in year one? What are we gonna do in year two? So I think in some ways, this year's improvement plan focuses on like still trying to build some foundations in certain areas that we might not have.
Okay.
Uh, do you have other questions?
No, not at this time.
Awesome. Um, anything else on the district, district, why can't I say that? District improvement plan. Okay, so we don't need to vote on this one. Next is the strategic plan. That one I can say.
Strategic plan too, I think at this point has been out there for a while. I think last time I talked a little bit. It started with the D L T.
It's in last week's. Is there, were there any changes from this week to last?
No.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Um, again, I keep saying like, this is that big picture, three to five year look at where we think the, um, we could make improvements or build on strengths. And I can't tell you exactly, but I think the school committee probably first got this in February, March. And then D L T had it before that. Staff got a chance to provide feedback. We sent it out to the community. We sent it out to the community for feedback a number of times, and some of the feedback we got from community are set, like, we've already started to integrate some of that where they've said to try to clarify something or ask a question, like, we've tried to jump right in in places where we can. And I think it was mentioned in public comment last, at the last meeting, something around, like, dual enrollment and how are we providing those opportunities? And that's one of those areas that we have in the strategic plan to say, how are we making sure and we're extending those opportunities for all students, students to do more advanced coursework? And I think that was a good example of something that maybe there's a shift down the road, and maybe it's sooner than later, but...
Any questions or comments on the strategic plan before we take a vote? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the strategic plan as presented.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback and questions throughout. I think that is certainly helpful for me to kind of know where, what people are thinking, what questions are out there, and so that we can be better prepared to respond to them. So I appreciate everybody.
All right, superintendent's report.
Short one, I think, tonight, so, because we've talked about a couple of things that I probably would have reported out on. Just want to let everybody know that we are on the home stretch. I'm sure some people are excited about that, some people maybe not so much, but new teacher orientation is next Tuesday and Wednesday for all new teachers to the district. All staff return next Thursday. We have convocation from 8:00 AM to 9:30 at the East Meadow Gym. School committee is certainly welcome. I think Jen will be there. She's done a welcome the past couple of years, so we're working on a plan for that. We also have a district-wide bullying training on Friday. That is from 10:00 to 12:00. That's certainly something, anything, if the school committee is interested in coming or stopping by, please let me know, and I can kind of give you an idea of what's going on. Athletics begins next week, so sports are back Monday, fall sports. And then our students return on Monday, August 28th, except for pre-K and K, who start back on the 5th. And then there's no school, just a reminder, on Friday, September 1st, so that's a day where there's no school for students. So people have that four-day weekend if they're trying to get out of town one last time before you wake up to frost on your lawns.
My, why would you say that?
The way that this summer event, it could be ice skating.
Oh, my God.
So I'm speaking to the water table.
Yeah. I just have two questions or comments for you, or, I'm not sure for you in particular, but maybe to reach out to the principals. I know that we got updates from both the elementary school and the high school regarding, you know, schedules and classroom teachers. I think this year, the assignments look a little bit differently, how you're accessing them. I don't know if you just want to take a quick minute, especially for East Meadow...
Sure.
About how to get there. I believe instructions were supposed to be sent out, but I don't think we've gotten them yet.
Okay.
So it was sent out last week in an email, and I know a lot of people are antsy to hear where their students are going to be.
Yeah, so we're going to use the portal. We use it at the junior, senior high school already, but going to open that up at East Meadow. It will be much more limited in East Meadow, where grades and everything going in at the junior, senior high school, so we'll likely get there at East Meadow. But for right now, it's an easy way and a secure way for teachers to communicate with families, families to communicate with teachers, and for us to get information out there. So, like, demographic forms, which have been sent electronically, but end up going to people's emails and things like that. We're going to try getting them out there on the portal. And then the way that we've tried to get people to sign up for the portal is to put the class lists on there first, because we know people are eager for that. So I will follow up on that. I knew, I saw the original email go out, but I will follow up on the, those instructions. And I would say, likely have something out by tomorrow if not.
Okay. And then just a reminder that the kindergarten playdate is on Thursday, this Thursday, August 17th, at 6 o'clock. And that's at the East Meadow Playground for incoming kindergarten families, if they so want to come and meet some of their classmates and take their short ride on the bus that they do every year. It's just a fun way to get to know incoming kindergarten. And I believe, I don't have the date, Mr. Sullivan, but the seventh graders coming into the high school to their...
orientation, Monday, 10 to 12.
Ten to 12.
So right after soccer practice, and going to orientation.
So, yes, thank you on that one. Seventh-grade orientation next door is...
And new students to grade and junior high school if they're transferring as a ninth grader.
Or school choosing in as...
School choosing in.
Okay.
Their orientation is the same time.
Yep.
Great.
So a little bit different program, but...
Thank you.
Okay. Todd?
The only thing that I have for you today for the junior, senior high school kitchen, I know we spoke a meeting or two ago about how we hadn't received any real interest in the bid process because we had such an aggressive timeline. If we couldn't get it done this summer, it was going to be next summer, so we said, let's go for it, let's see if we can get it done, and it didn't work. So what, I sent, I sent to 13 companies a request for a proposal for engineering drawings to be used for a bid package. So the one company that did come in in June said, it's going to take, you know, a couple months just to do the engineering phase of this before we could even start construction. So this way, all of that work would be done when the bid package goes out, they would have the specifications, and then they would be able to prepare their proposals. We would have a timeline looking for construction to begin at the end of the school year, so in June of 2024, to have it hopefully ready for the fall of '24. So that went out last week, so I'm waiting to hear that. We've already heard from one company who's just getting that background information to determine if they're interested in, so we've got that closing to have proposals to me by September 18th, and then we'll be able to make a decision if there's a firm we're going to go with.
Is there an update on school lunch?
So it's funded through the budget that was signed by the governor that will be doing the students' meals, primary meal for breakfast, and lunch will be paid for. Additional meals, à la carte items, those things, they would have to pay to their own accounts.
Any other...
Yeah, I'm nervous on that to say that it's permanent, but a lot of the language being used is that it's permanent. I know, as we've seen recently, certain things can, you think are permanent, can change, but it, yeah, it's been a lot of hard work. Unfortunately, the past two years, we found it in August that it was approved, so hopefully moving forward, we know early on in the process, because I think we've all said for the past couple of years, it'd be really difficult to go back.
Yeah, absolutely.
So appreciate everyone's advocacy on that. It was quite the effort over the last three years to really push that through, so...
That's it?
That's all I have.
Any other questions? Not CES, Jill?
We meet in September.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Any scheduling go-backs for our next meeting, which is the 31st, I think?
29.
29?
Close.
Whatever.
Very close.
It is Thursday. I'm just skipping right ahead, it's fine. So if nothing else, we'll vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A 3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. You do a roll call, please?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Farkley?
Aye.
Ms. Pear?
Aye.
Ms. Farkley?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.